I call the Policy Manual Subcommittee Meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, November 28th. The time is 6:02 PM. I'd like to do a roll call. Mr. Homer?
Here.
Mrs. Rivas-Mendez?
Here.
And the chair is present, myself, Joyce Asak. So, the first item, actually, let me just read one item. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast Channel 8 and 107.1 HD version and online via the link www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. So, we are going to go on as far as our agenda for the evening. The first item on our agenda, I'm going to invite Marcia Andrade Serpa to present policies I, H, B, and G. You're going to go over them with us. Thank you. Yes, thank you. So, it's this packet right here for the members that have it? No, it's this one right here. This one right here.
This one, right?
Okay. Perfect. This one that has the email. Perfect. You ready? Thank you.
Sure. So, this evening, we're going to discuss the homeschooling policy. And it was, it's I, H, B, G.
Mm-hmm.
I, H, B, G. You all have what you need?
I have it in my packet.
Yep.
Mr. Homer, do you have that?
Yeah, I'll set.
Perfect.
Okay. So, this is the proposed policy. Would you just like me to read it?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. "Mass General Laws Require the School Committee to Determine That a Homeschooling Program Meet with the Minimum Standards Established for Public Schools in the Commonwealth Prior to Approving Such a Program. When a parent or guardian of a student below the age of 16 wants to establish a home-based educational program for their child, the following procedures shall be followed in accordance with the law. Prior to removing the child from public school, the parent guardian must writ, I'm sorry, submit written notification of establishment of the home-based program to the appropriate administrator 14 days before the program is established and resubmit on a notification on an annual basis." So, this is submitting the educational plan for homeschooling. The parent must certify in writing on a form provided by the district. I have created an online form. It's on the back pages there in your packet. And it mimics the form that we used to have. It's just available online for families to complete. The form provided by the district asks for the name. It used to ask for the age. I am hoping that we can change that to the date of birth so that we're clear on whether or not the child is of compulsory school age. Place of residence and number of hours of attendance of each child in the program. The superintendent shall give the notice to produce records required by law if there is probable cause to believe the program is not in compliance with the law. Factors to be considered by the superintendent or school committee in deciding whether or not to approve the home education plan may be the proposed curriculum and the number of hours of instruction in each of the proposed subjects, the competency of the parents or guardians to teach the children, textbooks, workbooks, and other instructional aids to be used by the children, and lesson plans and teaching materials or manuals to be used by the parents or guardian. Periodic standardized testing of the children to ensure educational progress and the attainment of minimal standards. So, this is the plan that you had previously. My understanding, it was last, from 2002. So, we're looking to just move forward with some changes to include the online. So, the form needs to be provided from the district to the families. So, we're hoping that it's the online form. Again, we're asking for it to be the date of birth as opposed to simply the stated age. There are areas, the procedures are outlined in the subsequent pages. Did you want me to read all of that, or?
So, tonight, Donna, would we make a motion to add these as recommended? As far as the online form, make the change to the date of birth, the procedures outlined, or should we get the recommendations, make the changes, and come back and vote on them before the end of the year? As far as the policy? Because a lot of these policies, they had already gone through them that we're reviewing tonight back in June of 2022. So, this is something new.
I has never been seen by anybody.
So, this is, yeah, this is brand new. So, this hasn't been updated in...
I, J, and K have never been seen by anybody since 2002.
2002, yeah.
If you want to recommend... You want to recommend to add the changes that Marcia has recommended to the school committee? I can put that in a concise form, and it will go in the minutes, and it will become part of the record. And if you guys recommend that that goes forward to the full school committee, then they can vote on it in full school committee.
Okay. We'll do, we'll...
We wouldn't have to meet again on it.
Perfect. So, we're going to go with that recommendation. So, we will take a, get a motion. We don't need a motion tonight. We need a recommendation to make the changes that were recommended by Marcia and recommend that it goes to the committee of a whole for final review and approval.
This, everything that we recommend tonight will go to the committee of the whole.
Okay. So, this, but this is a brand-new policy change?
Well, it's really not a brand-new. It's just, instead of just presenting practically verbally what the parents are going to do, they fill out the form. And then, it's reviewed by BPS staff.
Right.
And then, it's either recommended to the full school committee that this child be allowed to be homeschooled.
So, as it stands, the online form that we've created mimics what was previously in hard copy form. And there is a section that requests the information from the family, their address, contact information. The student information, again, is similar to what was asked in the past with the change asking for the date of birth. And the proposed educational plan is also outlined there in the form. The addition, what we are hoping also to add and what I plan to do is, at the end of the homeschool plan, we ask for evidence of progress. And that is coming under my office now, over at the school registration office. So, upon that, with that review of the, at the end of it, we'll be able to look at if there was any, if there was academic progress, and that will help us make decisions for future approvals of plans.
Thank you. That makes sense because we had chatted, and you had mentioned as far as seeing what the requirements were and show the proof, the evidence of what they have been doing as far as the homeschooling. So, thank you for bringing this to our attention and bringing it forward so we can make these changes to better serve the families, you know, the homeschooling, and to make sure that our students are getting what they need, and we can make sure that we're monitoring that. So, we will get the changes as stated, and then, we will have this taken care of before the end of the year.
Okay.
Is there a time, do you need this done sooner for any approval for any homeschooling applications that...
As soon as you approve this, I will make sure that all of our current homeschool families receives the updated policy and so that they can be prepared for what is expected at the end of the year, et cetera.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Our attorneys don't need to review this by any, we're fine. We can just make these changes, and we can add it on to the next school committee meeting?
I would think so.
Okay. We'll do it for the next school, next official school committee meeting. I believe...
December 5th.
We'll have to do it for after that.
Okay.
It'll be the next school committee meeting.
Right.
Otherwise, we'll do a special meeting. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, we're fine with those changes?
Yep.
Perfect. Next item on our agenda is reviewing Section G. We had pulled some policies aside. If I can invite Dr. Moran.
Just the microphone. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like me to go through the blue ones first?
Yes, because I know there were some questions at the last meeting. So, we pulled some policies aside that we were questioning.
Okay. The first item in blue is the Staff Personal Security and Safety Policy. And as you can see, that the, it's been updated to match the mask policy in its recent version. So, I can go through that with you.
And that would be GBGB?
I can read through what the proposed recommendations are?
Okay. Pardon me?
I can read through the proposed recommendations?
Yes.
For the new one? Okay, great. So, this is Staff Personal Security and Safety. Through its overall safety program and various policies pertaining to school personnel, the committee will seek to assure the safety of employees during their working hours and assist them in the maintenance of good health. The superintendent may require an employee to submit a physical examination by a physician appointed to the school district whenever the employee's health appears to be a hazard to children or others in the school district, or when a doctor's certificate is legally required to verify, to verify need for sick leave. School employees, their families, and members of their household are eligible to use the confidential services provided by the municipality's Employee Assistance Program. Just wanted to mention that at this time, we, the district does not have an employee assistance program. We had one years ago. We were using All One Health, but we have not, it hasn't been funded in a number of years. So, at this time, we don't have it. So, I guess if we could have, that could end with employee assistance program if applicable.
I think one thing that they were curious about...
So, this was withheld because there was additional language that was proposed that we held on making a vote to approve this one. We were waiting to find out from HR about any groups that had any changes to language about successfully passing a pre-employment physical exam.
So, we have not had employees provide any documentation of a pre-employment physical exam for quite some time. So, that would need to be removed. So, when I received this, that was in red from 2016, and it was removed for the 2022 updated version. So, I believe it should be removed unless the school committee decides to require that, which we have not required for years.
Why was it issued?
It was for certain, so in the past, teachers used to, they need to, they needed to submit a TB test result, and they've not needed to do that for years. And for positions that are physical, such as custodial, maintenance, food service, there was talk of having them need to prove that they would be able to do the physical portions of the position. But that's not required at this time.
Any other questions from the committee?
No, not for that one. I don't have one that has red lines on it. That's why we were holding on to that one, I think, from the last time we met was, I didn't see him. I thought that they were adding something new. So, my apologies. Okay.
Mrs. Mendez, you go with that? Okay. So, then, the next policy would be GB, oops, sorry.
GBGB.
GBGB.
GBGE.
Oh, we did GBGE. So, it's GBGE.
E.
Is the next one.
Yes, so that's the Domestic Violence Leave Policy. This is missing, has been missing from the Brockton Public Schools policies as they haven't been updated in a number of years, and this is a newer policy. So, it was suggested that we adopt the one presented by MASK, which, do you have that in front of you? It's approximately two pages, three pages long?
Yes.
So, that is the one that MASK use, MASK's, MASK uses.
So, that's from October 2014. So, staff who are currently employed, they don't have any access to the language here in this. They haven't seen this. It's not part of their contract or anything?
It's not part of the policies, and it's not part of anyone's contract. But we have had people contact us because they do know it's out there, and we've shared it with them. But it's not an official, accepted, agreed-upon school committee policy yet.
Okay.
But should be.
Okay.
I don't see anything in the language there that keep you from approving it.
Okay. Mrs. Mendez, you're fine?
Yeah.
Okay.
That looks good.
So, so far, we went over GBGB and GBGE. The next one is GBGF, and that is Family Medical Leave Act, and that was updated in 2022. Recommendations, I should say, to update were in 2022.
Yes, this one is rather lengthy. We have, we have used this policy in the Human Resources Department for anyone who is needed to access it, but it has not been voted on and approved by school committee at this time. Again, this is something that, the source is MASK, so this is taken right off the MASK website.
Okay. Because there was a comment on here to just reach out to you to make sure if this is, if that was common practice?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Homer, Mrs. Mendez?
No, I was just looking at the, there was a comment that said, looking at a more robust policy and checking if a policy does not exist elsewhere, I guess, other than in the policy manual or anything like that.
It does not, no.
Yeah. No, I'm fine with this one as well. This one, I don't see any reason. I think there's just one note at the end of that in Section 6 with a strike through for language related to COVID from the time of the pandemic. And it's, I think, the recommendation is just to remove that one section, which I think the law expired on that one for the FFRCA or something like that, expiring on December, which says be, to be in effect from December 30th, 31st, 2020. And I don't know if that's anything that...
Donna? I have all the strike-throughs.
Okay.
Recommend deleting the COVID law. This has come and gone.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, it comes after the legal references, the source and legal references, yeah.
It's at the very end.
Yep, at the end of Section 6.
Yes, I agree. That needs to be removed.
Okay. Excellent.
Mrs. Mendez, you're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Next is GBJC, Teacher's Personnel File. And there's a notation that says nothing in MASK. So, this must have been...
Currently, there's nothing in MASK. So, when these were looked at previously, they've sat around for so long that now MASK has updated some of their things. And when I was trying to format these to put on our website, I noticed it was missing from MASK. So, this is a BPS-specific, recommended to retain if HR recommends that it stays in.
I don't see a reason not to keep it, but it is very specific. It refers only to the teacher or the educator's personnel file. If we do keep what is there, if you have a copy of it in front of you, the, the final sentence says the findings will be placed in the personnel file. I would just change that to maybe placed in the personnel file as oftentimes there are things that do not need to make it into the teacher's personnel file.
So, with that minor change, with just the word changed to maybe, Mrs. Mendez, Mr. Homer, any questions on that?
There's a note here, too, that just mentions that if it aligns with the CBA and current practice, too. And just, I think if, if it's expected and if it's in the bargaining agreement, if it's in the contract, then I don't see any reason not to retain it.
Yes.
If it's expected that it's...
There's contract language for the educator, CBA, that any time a complaint or commendation is given about a teacher, that it's brought to the teacher's attention in a timely fashion. So, that, it is in line with that. And again, just that piece about it may be placed in the teacher's personnel file. It does state in that policy, all letters will be kept by the building principal. So, oftentimes, they are, they are maintained at the building level versus sent to Human Resources for the teacher's personnel file.
So, is that up, is that the discretion of the principal, whether or not that would be placed in the personnel file?
It really depends on, again, the severity of it. We use progressive discipline when it comes to a complaint. So, there are often times when the first incident remains at the building level, and then, if there's a subsequent issue, it is then, that's documented and placed in the teacher's file. So, sometimes, it's using the steps of progressive discipline, the first letter would not go into the personnel file, but the second one would go in and would reference the first letter.
Got it. Okay.
We're good to move? Okay. Perfect. So, the next policy, we have Employment of Principals, GCBB. So, there is a reference that MASK policy updated to reflect its most recent version. It wasn't legally required to have that in there, but it, they have updated it. So, we have GC.
I agree it's not legally required, but I don't see any reason not to continue to maintain this policy.
Perfect. Any of the members have any questions on that one?
No, I agree. They should retain this one.
Okay. So, it does, it has been updated to the most recent MASK policy. So, it does reflect the recent version of it. Mrs. Mendez, are we good with that? Okay. And the next policy, we have, so, these remain green, so...
These are the ones we asked HR to look at. This was significantly different in MASK, the latest version. This was what the lawyers had said. But we still wanted Human Resources...
Okay. I just didn't...
To speak with us about it.
Okay. So, the next one is, let's see, we have GCBC, Professional Staff Supplementary Pay Plans. And it says MASK policy updated and reflects its most recent version. But the committee pulled that out.
There are some questions just about the third paragraph about teacher offered and undertake supplementary pay assignments, just the following language, which is just kind of questioned by legal.
A teacher who is offered and undertakes supplementary, supplementary pay assignment will receive a supplementary contract specifying the pay, duration, and terms of assignment. If a teacher will not be extended the assignment for the following school year but will remain on the teaching staff, here she will be notified in writing prior to the expiration of the contract. Upon termination of the assignment, the supplementary, the supplementary pay will cease. That is all accurate. But if for any reason there are, there's a reduction of force or elimination of position, and that supplementary pay is reduced, the teacher would be notified, and the additional pay would be decreased. So, that's accurate.
So, that's current, current best practice?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further questions from the committee? Okay. We'll go on to Philosophy of Staff Development, GCIA.
So, this one, I believe the two updates were numbers four and five, that Leaves of Absence for Graduate Study, Research, and Travel. And again, that would be upon request of and approval by the superintendent. Partial payment of tuition for approved courses is something that the district has never been able to fund. I understand that's from MASK, but we have not been able to do that. And I, if we put a caveat that, obviously, if we had the funding to do that, but otherwise, we have not made payments for approved courses. We offer lots of courses through the district at either a reduced rate or no pay if they're provided through the district. So, but we have not paid tuition unless we've received grant funding, which we've done as well. So, if you'd like to add that, that would have to just have a caveat that, if there's funding available.
So, Dr. Moran, your recommendation would be to add under number five, partial payment of tuition for approved courses if funding is available?
Yes.
Okay. The committee, have any other recommendations?
No, that makes sense.
Okay. So, we will make those changes on that? Thank you. And the next item is Retirement of Support Staff Members, GDQC. It's actually the last page.
Okay. Currently, there is no longer anything in MASK that refers to this, and Human Resources provides this information at every school committee meeting. So, it's already something that's done with regularity.
So, this remains with no changes?
Yeah. The superintendent will inform the committee. HR does that anyway.
We do get those, the notifications on a regular basis?
Yeah, they were in every school committee book.
Yeah, on a week, every meeting or...
Yep.
If this is to remain the last sentence that states that when a resignation is accepted by the superintendent, the employee may be expected to continue in service at his or her assigned duties for a period of 30 days after submission. I just want to stress, may be expected, because there are often times when we do not enforce that for whatever reason. But we could ask them to stay for the 30 days, but we may not.
Well, that's no longer in the most current...
I think the proposed one does not include that language.
Yeah, the most current... Yeah, the most current... It's just that they'll...
Submit their resignation?
It's just that the school committee will be notified...
Okay.
On a regu-, you know.
Perfect.
Any recommendations from the committee?
No, I think we've done it. It just says, we were going to check to see if it's accurate. Checking to see if we have the most up-to-date thing. It looks like we didn't, but I would go with the new one that removes that language. I would recommend taking that language out and going with the proposal, the proposed language we have here that omits that piece.
And the only other thing, Kathy, the criminal offender record information?
Yes.
It was taken out of G, or it was recommended to be removed from G because it already exists in A, ADDA and ADDA hyphen R.
Sure, it doesn't need to be in two places. Were there other questions about the query policy, or was it just where to place it?
I thought Joyce might have questions about the query.
I know we had met with some questions on that a while ago. Which policy? Because I don't have that in my packet.
It was an orange strike through for the...
Criminal record, GBEAA.
Yeah.
I don't seem to have it.
It's right here. I gave it to you with the...
Oh, with the agenda, perfect.
It's with the agenda.
So I do know, I do know we had gone over some questions and some recommendations. I know as far as the query check, background check, I know we had talked about whether, whether there are BPS employee coming through the HR department that they have to have a query check and whether it's a third party that we source out to that we need to make sure that they do the query checks and we somehow get a, we can't, there was a way that we just need to make sure anyone that's going into our schools has a query check.
Yes, so there's a difference between the query and the fingerprints. Anyone who works or volunteers in the Brockton Public Schools, the query is run through the Brockton Public Schools. For fingerprints, that's different. The fingerprints could be run by, they go through DCJIS, but they can, if someone did their fingerprints and had them sent to another district, we can accept a suitability determination letter. But to be clear, everyone who works or volunteers in this district, the query is run through the Brockton Public Schools. We're not allowed to share query information with others, and we wouldn't accept it. We would run it ourselves. There's no cost to the member or the volunteer, so we run them ourselves.
Okay, so anyone, whether they're, we contract, say we're contracting a company that's bringing their own employees that are working with our BPS students. I know there was, we want to make sure that they have the query checks.
Yes, through Brockton.
And that you have a copy of those. So that's in here now? Because I know, I know we met a while ago on that. And we just wanted to make sure that the query checks, no matter who it is, if they have a, an ID and they're in our schools, that they have, we have a record of their query checks. I think we were going to check on something with Sarah.
ADDA, that one?
ADDA.
And the last sentence in the first paragraph?
School volunteers.
School volunteers and subcontractors, laborers who may have directed, unmonitored access, contact with students must continue to submit state criminal offender record information query checks. And that would happen through the, that comes through the district.
Yeah. So how far, how many years, how far back do? I think we were talking about going further back than what we had in our original policy.
So there's a system-wide query conducted in the district every three years. The last one was done in 2013, sorry, 2023. So we'll do it again in 2026. That is for all current employees. For volunteers, we run those annually.
Okay. Perfect.
And then again, before employment, if there's a new employee, that is run upon recommendation for hire, and the person would not start until the query has come back and been reviewed.
Okay. Any members with any other comments or recommendations? For right now, I'm okay with this. I just want to go back and look at my notes from when we met. Because I just want to make sure, I know there was something, I'm drawing a blank right now.
We had, you, there was a meeting that we had in the conference room?
Yes, yes.
I believe the question about that was, what are the guidelines that we use? So I do have those for you, if you want to take a look at them?
Yes, as long as, because I know we were trying to do a deeper dive sometimes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the last time that the policy was reviewed was in 2011. If you turn to the last page, that was a draft at the time, but these are the review guidelines that we use, that I use. And you can review, I can read through some of them. But I think this, the question was if these were stringent enough.
I, I'm remember, because I'm thinking the five years, I'm thinking, I think we needed to look a little further.
Sure.
Can we just pull this one out and maybe revisit this one?
Sure.
Because I do know, after looking at this, I just want to take a look at my notes.
Sure.
After that meeting, because I know we were making recommendations to maybe extend it a little further than five years, depending on some of the, depending what the crime is.
Sure, yeah. And again, these, these were not, have not been revisited since 2011. So I'm happy to update them.
Okay.
Donna, I have extra copies for the rest of the members.
So if we can just pull...
Thank you.
AD, is it all part of one, ADDA?
ADDA.
See, so it's A. Attention and instruction. These are all part of ADDA.
Yep.
So if we, if the committee, I'd like to pull that aside to just look into that a little further because we haven't visited this since 2000, I believe, 11, Dr. Moran mentioned. And I know, I know some committee members were mentioning we might want to make some minor changes. So we'll put this one aside for now. The ADDA, going to hold that. And I believe that's all we had, correct, Donna?
Yep, that's all, and that's perfect.
So we can go ahead, if the committee's okay with what we went over, we can, if I can get a motion, I can, we can read all the policies and go ahead and approve these policies.
You're going to read the blue ones that we went over tonight?
I say we read the blue ones, because I believe we've already, we've already approved the others. It was just the blue ones that we pulled, pulled aside, so...
Oh, wait a minute, excuse me.
Oops, sorry.
GBECA, Internet Acceptable Use Policy. There was a question if a pop-up happens, and yes, it does. A pop-up saying somebody using our internet has to check that off, and...
Good. We just wanted to make sure it was in place and it was working, functioning. Okay, that's great.
It is, okay.
Yeah.
So...
So the ones on the yellow one.
So we can, I'll go through, these are all the G policies. So Personnel Goals, GA. Criminal Offender Record Information Query, GBEAA. Internet Acceptable Use Policy, GBECA. Staff Personnel Security and Safety, GBGB. Domestic Violence Leave Policy, GBGE. Family Medical Leave Act, GBGF. Teacher's Personnel File, GBJC. Professional Staff Salary Schedules, GCBA. Employment of Principals, GCBB. Professional Staff Supplementary Pay Plans, GCBC. Philosophy of Staff Development, GCIA. Resignation of Professional Staff Members, GCQD. Retirement of Professional Staff Members, GCQE. Retirement of Support Staff Members, GDQC.
GCDE.
Oh, I was down here, did we miss GCDE? Retirement of Professional Staff Members?
Oh, there we go, yep.
Yep, GC, GCQE. I don't have a DE. I have GDQC.
Yep.
Okay, that's retirement of support, support staff members, GDQC. So if we can get a motion to approve the policies as presented?
You need a motion to recommend to the committee for approval? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Yeah.
You're recommending to take this to full school committee?
Yep. So yeah, I'd make a motion for the subcommittee to present these items to the full school committee for approval.
Second. So a motion's been made by Mr. Homer and properly seconded by Mrs. Mendez. All in favor, just show a hands, unanimous? And that will go to the committee of a whole? We'll have that presented at the December, second December meeting?
Yes.
Next item we have is Review Section I. Actually, before we review Section I, if the, if the record can reflect that we have policy ADDA, the background checks, to come back and review that?
Yep.
Okay. And then, let's see what we have here, this one. Personnel Goals. All right, so we have Section I. So the way that these are broken down is we have Mask Policy, which is in yellow. Recommendation to Remove, which is in a peach color. Mask Policy Recommend to Add is in a pink. And BPS Specific is in blue. So the ones that are recommended to remove, if anyone has any questions as we review them, let me know. If the committee has any questions on any of them. And then the ones that are in blue are, have been looked at and recommended to delete? Is that? Retain, recommended to retain?
Yes.
So I can go through them, if you'd like? We can do them by color? Okay, so Mask Policy. So Instructional Goals was recommended to remove, IA.
I have a question.
Sure.
So IA on the comments, it says that it's a BHC, BHS-specific policy and that it's going to be reestablished when there's district goals because this was last updated in 2002. But isn't this policy what requires of district goals? The instructional goals, that's the purpose of this policy, right?
We can, we can take a look at it, IA.
Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Instructional Goals, "The primary function of a school program is the instruction of students. All staff activity and effort shall be directed toward providing a high-quality, effective, and ever-improving instructional program. There are primarily three functions involved in carrying out the instructional program, which is the operating function, the coordinating and developing function, and the evaluating function. The operating function involves classroom instruction and providing program management. The coordinating and developing function includes monitoring activities, curriculum development, in-service education, and special services. The evaluation function involves data collection and synthesis and establishing future direction. The superintendent of schools, after conferring with the staff, parents, and students, shall formulate a list of objectives for the impending school year and publicize them. After the approval of the school committee, instructional priorities shall be included among these objectives." I just don't see why we wouldn't get rid of it. It's like what we need, right?
No, 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 it's not, I don't, I don't think they're recommending for you to get rid of it. I think they're recommending for it to be revisited every year and updated to reflect the most recent superintendent goals for the system.
Okay, but we have that information already from, right? The, what the goals of the last year.
Yeah.
So why won't we just update them then?
Yeah.
It says to update annually.
Annually is what, that's what looks different, is that instead of setting three- or five-year plans that we don't revisit this, this is more specific to say an annual update on those. I agree, I think you leave it, but it's, it's the idea that we would revisit the annual goal.
Yeah.
We'd make that, so not to remove anything from it.
Yeah, required.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think the comment was confusing, but I don't, I don't think they meant to say remove the whole policy.
No, because if you look at the comment, it says, "BPS-specific policy. Recommendation to remove and revisit when establishing annual district goals." This policy was, and it was last updated in 2002, but...
Yeah.
It's, the way I'm understanding it is...
Well, it's just that the instructional goals in 2002 are vastly different than the instructional goals of now. So this policy really should have been updated.
It's been 21 years.
So that's what I'm saying, because it doesn't look like there's frequency in update of these policies, I don't see this being updated annually at all. But when I look at this policy, it's like a blueprint of what should be happening. So that's what I'm saying, it should remain so that can continue to happen.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know why they had the word "remove" there, because I don't think they meant for it to be removed. I think they meant for it to be revisited. But I agree with Cynthia. I think we leave it in place.
Okay.
I would recommend we leave it in place.
Not removing, right?
Correct, yeah, I think you're right. It's, it's very concrete in what we should be doing every year.
Yeah. To...
I would just make the recommendation that we, instead of removing that, that we would just bring that to the full committee for, just as part, as one to retain, to approve, to retain.
Okay.
That's, that's my suggestion.
Wasn't this reviewed last year? No, okay.
Nobody's ever looked at these.
So this is brand new?
Yeah, and honestly, when I go to format this, to post it on the website, I'm going to go back and look at what mask has, is currently recommended, recommending, and it might change. In which case, I would recommend that I make a list of these and bring them back to the next policy manual subcommittee and look at it again.
Okay.
Just as that specific policy should be brought up at the annual meeting every year or after the superintendent presents their goals, it should be updated every year.
It should. I was just thinking about...
Yeah, I think, I think, I think Ms. Venus Mendez is on the right track where I think it's, it's a policy to revisit it every year is what we want the language to say. So mask may have different language, but I think for Brockton Public Schools, it's probably not a bad idea for us to be even more strict on making sure that the superintendent's providing updated annual goals based on the data. I think that's, you know, revisiting it.
Okay. And we can bring that to the committee of a whole as well. So that, we're going to just leave. So even though it's recommended to remove, we're just going to pull, pull, Instructional, Instructional Goals, IA. We're going to pull that out and revisit that, that policy. The next one is Academic Freedom, IB. Mask Policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. The next one is School Calendar, IC hyphen E. It said, "Missing Policy Recommendation to Remove." I mean, the school calendar is voted on, on a yearly basis, IC, E?
Yeah, I think if there's a policy that the school committee approves it, if that's in a different part of the program, then it doesn't need to be in Section I. As long as we have a policy for it somewhere else, it makes sense so that it's just not duplicated.
Okay.
I would just say we just kind of double-check and find out where that is in the policy, if it's not in Section I.
Yeah, there's nothing here, so it is missing. So, so School Calendar, we're going to pull that one out as well. IC hyphen E, okay. School Year School Calendar, I mean, that would probably fall under that as well. Let's just see. School Year School Calendar, and that is School Year School Calendar, IC, backslash ICA, Mask Policy Missing From BPS Policies Recommendation to Add. School Day ID. These were all in 2019, so they're, they're a little more recent than the 2002 ones. So School Day is Mask Policy, it was missing from the BPS policies. There's a recommendation to add that. Organization of Instruction, it's no, it says no longer in mask. Mask Policy Missing From, that's IE, Mask Policy Missing From BPS Policies. And there was a recommendation to add. Those were all last updated in 2019. I'll move on to Curriculum Development. It was combined with IGD, so IGA. Mask Policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Support Services Programs, IGB. Mask Policy, it was missing from our BPS policies and it was recommended to add. Curriculum Adoption, that was combined with IGA, so IGA and IGD. IGA was added to that, so Mask Policy Updated to Reflect Its Most Recent Version. Curriculum Guidelines Course Outlines, IG. Recommendation to Remove. Basic Instructional Program, IHA. Recommendation to Remove. Physical Education, IHAE. Recommendation to Remove. Career Education, it's no longer in mask, IHAI. And that was a mask policy updated... And that was a mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Occupational Education Admission, IHAI. BPS-specific redundant recommendation to remove. Technology Vision and Mission Statements, IHAJ. BPS-specific recommendation to retain. Health Education, IHAM. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Health Education, IHAM hyphen R. Mask policy, it was missing from the Brockton BPS policies, and it was recommended to add. Parent Notification Relative to Sex Education, IHAMA. Coding Corrected to Read, IHAMA from IHAM hyphen R. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco, IHAMB. And that was updated in 2016, so that wasn't too long ago. That was a mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Work Experience Opportunities, IHAQ. BPS-specific, it was redundant, recommendation to remove. Specific Instructional Programs and Accommodations, IHB. Mask policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Students Receiving Sped Services Outside Their Regular ED Classes, IHB hyphen R. BPS-specific redundant recommendation to remove. Programs for Students with Disabilities, IHBA. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Observations of Special Education Programs, IHBAA. Mask policy was missing from the BPS policies, recommendation to add. Programs for Students with Disabilities, IHBB. Policy Code Corrected from IHBB to IHBA. Mask policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Gifted and Talented Education, IHBB. BPS-specific recommendation to retain. Compensator, I can't even talk. Compensatory Education, IHBD. Mask policy missing from BPS policies, recommendation to add. Bilingual Instruction, IHBE. BPS-specific recommendation to retain. English as a Second Language, IHBEA. Mask policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Homebound Instruction, IHBF. And that was updated in 2020. Mask policy was missing from the BPS policies, and it was recommended to add. Homeschooling, IHBG. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Homeschooling, IHBG hyphen E. BPS-specific redundant recommendation to remove. Alternative School Programs, IHBH. Mask policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Alternative School Programs, IHBH hyphen E. BPS-specific redundant recommendation to remove and replace with IHBH. Magnet Schools, IHBHB. BPS-specific recommendation to retain. Remote Learning, IHBH. And that was updated in 2020. Mask policy was missing from the BPS policies, recommendation to add. Remote Learning Addendum, IHBH hyphen E. That was also updated in 2020. Mask policy was missing from BPS policies, recommendation to add. Summer Schools, IHCA. Mask policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Advanced College Placement Courses, IHCD. BPS-specific recommendation to remove. Library Resource, oh, sorry. Advanced College Placement Courses, IHCD. Did I do that one? Yes. Library Resources, IHAC. BPS-specific recommendation to remove and replace with mask policies, IJL and IJLA. Reconsideration of Instructional Resources. I, sorry. IIAE. BPS-specific recommendation to remove. Reconsideration of Library Materials, IIAE hyphen R. BPS-specific recommendation to remove and replace with mask policies, IJL and IJLA. Student Schedules and Course Loads, IIE. BPS-specific recommendation to remove. Instructional Materials, IJ. Mask policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Oh, boy. We got another page going. So the next page, we have reconsideration of Instructional Resources, IJ hyphen R. I'm going to just double-check the time. Mask policy is missing from BPS policies, recommendation to add. Library Material Selection and Adoption, IJL. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Library Materials, IJL hyphen R. BPS-specific recommendation to remove. Library Resources, IJLA. Mask policy missing from BPS policies, recommendation to add. Specific Interest Material Selection and Adoption, IJM. BPS-specific recommendation to remove. Access to Digital Resources, IJND. Mask policy missing from BPS policies, recommendation to add. Internet Acceptable Use, IJNDB. Move to Policy, GBECA. Recommendation to Remove. Internet Publication, IJNDC. And this was also updated in 2015. Mask policy missing from BPS policies, recommendation to omit. Social Media, IJND. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Field Trips, IJOA. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Field Trips backslash not school-sponsored, IJOAA. BPS recommendation to omit. Community Resource Person Speakers, Resource Persons backslash Speakers, IJOB. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. School Volunteers, IJOC. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Academic Achievement, IK. Grading Systems Junior and Senior High School, IK. Examinations, IK. Those were all BPS-specific recommendations to omit. Student Progress Reports to Parents, IKAB. Mask policy was updated to reflect its most recent version. Parent Conferences, IKACA. Homework Policy, IKB. Honor Roll, IKD. Those were all specific recommendations to omit. Promotion and Retention of Students, IKE. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Promotion and Retention of Kindergarten Through Grade Six, IKEA. Promotion and Retention of Junior High Students, IKEB. Promotion and Retention of High School Students, IKEC. Those were all BPS-specific recommendation to omit. Graduation Requirements, IKF. Evaluation of Instructional Programs, IL. Those are both mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Test and Assessment Administration, ILB. BPS-specific recommendation to omit. Student Submission to Educational Surveys and Research, ILD. Mask policy is missing from BPS policy, recommendation to omit. Sorry.
Some recommendation to add?
What is, what was the last one?
Did ILD, that was the student submission to educational surveys.
ILD, thank you.
Was that mask policy missing from BPS, recommendation to add?
I apologize, recommendation to add.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Homer.
Yes, okay.
Teaching Activities and Presentations, IMA. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Teaching About Controversial Issues and Controversial Speakers, IMB. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Inviting Public Officials and Candidates for Public Office to Speak. That is IMC. BPS-specific recommendation to omit. School Ceremonies and Observances, IMD. Mask policy updated to reflect its most recent version. Animals in School, IMG. Mask policy missing from BPS policies, recommendation to add. Service Animals in School, IMGA. Mask policy missing from BPS policies, recommendation to add. So we just went through the I policies. If any of the members have any questions on those? Okay. Otherwise, if I can get a motion to approve those as, as stated, and I need a second.
Yeah, so.
We're only, actually, we're pulling out of all of these, we're going to remove Instructional Goals, IA. In-School Calendar, IC hyphen E. Otherwise, the rest of the policies as stated. A motion to.
Motion to approve the policies that were stated.
A, a motion's been made by Mrs. Mendez.
To be presented to a school committee for, for full school committee for approval, yes, seconded.
To be, so the motion was made to move these policies to the committee of a whole for review and approval, and do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Mendez and probably seconded by Mr. Homer. All in favor, show your hands. And that is unanimous. We are running short on time, so I am going to ask that we, if I can get a motion to remove Section J and K, to, to remove them from the agenda and put them on the next agenda, because we are running a little overtime for our school committee meeting.
Yeah, maybe, I make a motion to suspend those two item, agenda items, the review of Section J and the review of Section K. So a motion to suspend those items from this meeting and propose to continue those at next meeting and, second meeting in December.
Second.
So a motion's been made by Mr. Homer, properly seconded by Mrs. Mendez, a show of hands. And that's unanimous. So we will add those to the next agenda. Do we have anything under other business?
No.
Nope. So we will, we will have another meeting in December to review some of the policies that we were going over this evening. So since we don't have any other business, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Mendez, probably seconded by Mr. Homer. All in favor, show your hands.